Come to order, please. Roll call, city clerk.
Mr. Abraham.
Present.
Mr. Gault.
Present.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Mayor Kahler.
Present. Tonight, we have Michael Jenkins, and he is a youth leader at Relevant Church, and he's going to be doing our invocation. Michael's been with us before, so thank you for coming back again.
Yeah, you're welcome.
And Commissioner Rhodes, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
You just stand up.
Right after our invocation.
Father God, we just come to you tonight. We just thank you and love you, and we just pray that we can be a blessing back to you, God. And right now, I just pray for the leaders of McCracken County and Paducah, God, that you give them guidance, that you give them knowledge and understanding, God, that you just point them in the right direction to lead our city. And I just pray for just a growth and just a pureness in this city, God, that brings people to us. And we just bless you and just love you again, God, in your name we pray. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And are there any additions or deletions?
No, Madam Mayor, there are no additions or deletions.
Okay, before we have our presentation, I would like for Howard Clark and Nikki Clark to come up front, please. And Howard and Nikki own Red's Donuts here in Paducah, Kentucky.
Hey!
Not only were you the winner of the 2015 Best Donuts by the Paducah Sun, but they were also listed on a website, and it's herkentucky.com, Heather Watson, and there were five competing for Best Donuts in the state of Kentucky, and Red's is number one.
Hey! Good job, guys. Good job.
So I just want to thank you all for being in business in Paducah for 59 years. We appreciate that, and I love your new renovation. It's beautiful. So thank you so much for what you do for Paducah. Thank you. Do you want to say anything? Did you bring any donuts?
We just want to thank everybody that contributed to the success of our business. People of Paducah have just been wonderful supporters, like I said, for 59 years. They have just absolutely turned out of ropes and making this our biggest year ever.
Good, great. Thank you.
We're not 59, sir.
Did you have to stand on a stool when you started?
Just a little. Probably was a milk crate or a coke crate.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you.
I'd like to thank you to all.
Well, that, I love Red's. You go in, you get your donut, you get your milk, and you're out. I mean, and that's exactly the way it works. I mean, folks, they know, they go in, they get it, and the product's good, so that's why folks keep coming. The service is right there. You don't have a lot of time to chat it, to give them their donuts, donut holes, I'm out. And that's great. That's great. Congratulations again.
And you'll meet anybody and everybody at Red's, so you all don't have to stay for the meeting, I want you to know that. But you need to stay for this next presentation, because these are your future donut eaters. So we have a presentation tonight by the young professionals. Brandy Harless, and last year, I decided that I wanted to talk with different groups of young people around the community to give some input on, you know, what's important, what can we do better. So a committee was formed of those three groups that met. And Brandy, thank you for being the facilitator of this group, and thank you for being here. And I'd like for everybody to introduce themselves.
Sure, yeah. We have two people coming up to speak. I can introduce them for you. So we actually invited some people that were not a part of this committee, because part of the findings in our committee was that we felt like we weren't being inclusive enough. And so we had known, we all probably listed 20 other people that we thought would be a great asset to something like this, and this is what we're going to present to you tonight. So we reached out to those people and asked them to come join the group tonight, too. So we have some people not in this committee, but I'm going to name all of the young people that are here that I know. So this is going to be tricky. So this meant Lauren, so we're glad Lauren's here. Landy Bryant, Ashley McMillan, Adam Scholl, Jonas Nehoff, Kenny Bussey, Missy Brown, and we're going to include you guys, too, right? Michael Jenkins and his girlfriend, what's your name again?
Katie.
Katie, great, nice to meet you again. So we are going to start this presentation. We have a formal presentation, just to give you some visuals about what we've done. But the thing that we wanted to do first was have a few people come up and share stories with you about why we care so much about Paducah. And I wrote a column back in February, I think it was, in The Sun, and it was about what are millennials, and it was really about what drives us to be a part of our community. And if you read that or have looked into millennials, we really are very driven by having social impact in the places that we live. So we don't choose living in a place lightly. Most of us have lived outside of Paducah or have come back from college or whatever it may be, and we have all had this conversation that it was a hard decision for us. It's not like we just move back because it's easy. We've moved back because we see opportunity and we want to create opportunity. So this group really was, I think, we're thankful for that. So thank you all for letting us do this, because it really started this conversation about what is it going to take to keep us here, and then also to attract other young people. And I think that we're doing it from the inside out. Instead of creating things that can attract people in, we're actually creating this culture from the inside out, which is very, very exciting. So Jonas and Landy, come first, since she's on the outside, they're going to share with you why they've chosen to commit to Paducah.
Hi, Landy Bryant-Green, Executive Director of Maiden Alley Cinema, owner of Brickolage Art Collective. So I'm very invested in downtown Paducah. I actually moved to Paducah in 2002 as an elementary art teacher, right out of college, fresh and green. Grew up in Catas, Kentucky, which is about 2,000 people, so Paducah was a big city when I moved here. Like, I feel like I need to give that as a preclaimer, but as I've lived here and gotten more engaged, I've found that, I've found my people, which has made me want to be more invested in the community. So I think it is a journey. I think we have to think about the new people that move here and how they get engaged. It took me a while to figure out where to go, where I was welcome, where I wouldn't be, where it wouldn't feel kind of like an elitist atmosphere, quite honestly, because I was new to the community. So I think that's part of the mission of what we're doing, is to make all the arts, entertainment, and cultural events that are already available really accessible to young people. Because that was one of the things that came from our group as well, is like, new things. What do we need to offer to get young people here? We already have a lot of great stuff. We just have to engage people and educate them on what is already going on. So that's a big part of the discussion that we had. But, gosh, I've been here since 2002, and I know all of you have presented up here before about the Columbia Project, about Maiden Alley, about all the things, but I think Paducah, because I've gotten so engaged, has made me want to stay here. This is where I will live forever, and I think the opportunity for people to get engaged is really important, to get on boards, to get involved in the city government. I'm also on the Paducah Main Street Board, which has been great and vital. I feel like I am making an impact where I live. So I think young people crave that now, so I think that's what we need to talk about. So thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Don't let the bald head fool you. I am a young professional. I laughed, I got asked if I was the youth pastor when I walked in, and Michael got asked if he was a part of the Young Professional Committee. So there was a little bit of profiling at the door. But, you know, as far as, I'm originally from Houston, Texas, is where I grew up, and I moved here when I was 14. And when I first moved here, to be honest, I was like, oh, I can't stand this, it's too small, I don't like it, I like the big city. And then, you know, something changed inside of me as I got older, and especially after I got married and had kids, you know, go to visit Chicago, or St. Louis, or Nashville. And, you know, I just, there's nothing about that larger city that makes me want to pick my family up and move to that. I love the small community. I love just that feeling of community that Paducah has, where you know people, you get into friends at grocery stores and different things. And as far as young people, I think you have kind of two different groups. You have those who are young, kind of single, that are just looking for nightlife and things of that nature, and then you have people like myself. I have three kids, eight, six, and four. And what I love about this community for my family is that I feel safe. It's close enough to things. If we want to get away to Nashville, it's great for that, but it's got a lot right here as well, just for us to be able to connect professionally. Started a business here three and a half years ago. It's done excellent, been great, been very supported by the community here. And the thing that I really like about it is that you're not really pigeonholed in, like if I was in Nashville and I had a business in Nashville. You're kind of pigeonholed into the Nashville market, to where where I'm at and with what I do, we're doing business in St. Louis, and Nashville, and Louisville, because it doesn't really, you're close enough to them and you're kind of on the fringe that you can actually kind of penetrate all of those markets. So that's something that I've found as a competitive advantage of being in an area kind of out, on the outskirts of these bigger areas. So I love it on both fronts, you know, and what really, that's really what keeps me here, that and Red's Donuts and other. And we, I mean, if you guys ever leave, I'll probably leave Paducah. But it's great, I really love the community, and this, it's been great being a part of this Young Professional Committee, so thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. I think it's always really awesome to, one of the things I think we really enjoy is hearing each other's stories and how different they are. I mean, they're completely different. And so that, to me, says a lot about how complex this question is of how do you keep and retain young people. It is a very complex question. And so that leads me into this presentation, because we went at this from this perspective of like, what are we going to do? What are the projects we're going to come to you today with and recommend that should be done by other people and not us? And we ended much differently than that, so you'll see as we go through this. So this is a very quick, Mayor Kahler mentioned this, this was kind of the process we went through. We really wanted to outline and to kind of show you how we got to where we are now. So last fall, as Mayor Kahler mentioned, we had three lunches with about 60 young professionals, and that all came, culminated into this Mayor's Young Professional Committee that we started. And then Jonas opened his mouth and decided that I was going to be nominated as the chair. Thank you, buddy, for that. And then we got together, the 20 of us, ended up being about 18 by the end, and asked these questions. How do we keep young people and how do we recruit new young people to our community? So these are the members that represent a lot of different industries, which was really neat to see when we actually started thinking about this. And it was a diverse group of people. I'll tell you one thing that was so fascinating, and I don't know if it's that entrepreneurs step up to the plate nine times out of 10 or what, but the majority of the time we were having conversations, it was about entrepreneurship. It wasn't even about young people. And so we had to like drive the conversation back and forth, because we were like, what are we talking about? Are we talking about entrepreneurship? And I think the big message there is that those things go hand in hand, that we are entrepreneurial by nature. A lot of us are. We really enjoy thinking of new ideas and making them actually happen. We're not a lot of talkers, we're actually doers, and that was something that really resonated with this group. So what we did was we sampled our peers. We each were tasked to ask about 10 people questions about what they loved about Paducah, what they thought was missing, what they missed from places that they moved from, and then we clustered all of that feedback in a session, about two-hour session, and found these top four areas came out that were pretty consistent. So the first one was affordable, modern housing. The second one was diverse arts and entertainment. The third was barriers to new property development, and the fourth was communication. And that was communication of a lot of things, communication of our city, communication of opportunities, of events, of happenings, all of those kinds of things. So we went at this and thought, okay, what kind of projects can we present that meet this, that fall into these areas? Well, as we all went out into these focus groups, we started realizing that we didn't necessarily think that doing the projects or recommending the projects was the way to go, because we only had 20 people at the table. And we wanted to have every young person we knew at the table, because we knew we could get a bigger movement and more happening if we actually had a bigger group. So we kind of stepped back from that, and that's that last piece where we really started clarifying our mission and our goals. So what we've decided to do is we're going to start, we're not even going to call this an organization right now, we're going to call it a movement, called Impact Paducah. And our vision, as you can see, is to see a vibrant, thriving, social and professional life for young people in Paducah. And our mission is to be a catalyst for community progress that fosters a thriving Paducah and attracts young people to our city. This was a really important piece, because the other piece that was really important to us is that we did not only invite young people to be a part of this movement. We know that our goal is about young people, but we want to invite all the people that are creative and thinkers and visionaries in our city to be a part of this group. And that way, we can get a bigger reach. So this is, these are the goals and some values that came out of this group. Our two goals, simple and easy to understand, we want to create a platform to communicate existing social and professional opportunities. So as Landy mentioned, one of the biggest issues sometimes people tell us is that they don't know what's happening or how to get engaged. So we want to create the platform. We don't want to reinvent a wheel. We just want to create the platform by which people can learn about these opportunities. The second one is to improve, so organize Paducah visionaries to share new ideas and foster actions that solve challenges and improve our community. This is a big one. And the one thing I want to say about this is that oftentimes, I think we get confused between how to be prideful about our city, but also identify the challenges that need to be solved. And that's something that this group really, I think, was shining on. We were all able to have a great session of how much we love our city, as you heard before, but we also want to solve the challenges that are in our city. So we can do that with pride, and we can do that with optimism. And these are our values that we came up with, so always be inclusive, as I mentioned, work towards actionable change, use data to drive decision-making, be flexible, and always be optimistic, as I mentioned. So these are the areas where we're going to focus. We kind of took some of those issues that we found in those four areas in clustering our feedback and mashed them up into this. So we're going to focus socially and professionally. One, on presenting ideas for affordable and modern housing that attracts young people, also giving opportunity for places like Maiden Alley or other groups to show what they're offering in a networking setting. Also, new resident recruitment and retention. So it was actually interesting simultaneously, as this group was getting started, Chuck Tate was trying to revitalize the 20s and 30s group, because they were finding a need for new people to plug in. And so we all came together, and in that inclusive manner, we all said, well, why are we going to do this separately? We should all do this together. So we wrapped that into this mission. And then professionally, you can see mentorship programs for new people who move to town that need that kind of peer support or mentorship, community think-takes for these new ideas, and also helping with any of the new business startup stuff and supporting small business. So here's our next step, this is the last slide. We're going to put together the leadership structure after we invite more of these people to the table. Our goal is to get 100 young people to join our email list, so they know about what we're doing. We have about 40 probably right now, and then host a monthly meeting for this networking and learning opportunity around the focus areas. So our ask of you is fairly simple. We want you to join with us in trying to make this happen. If you know of people that want to be engaged in something like this, please send us their contact information. Also, if there's partnerships that you think have overlapping efforts, so some of that new business startup support or existing business startup, if we can, if you can help us make those connections with those agencies in town, so we're not duplicating efforts, that would be excellent. And then also just be involved with our ideas and plans as we come up with those through this process. So thank you so much for this opportunity. Do you guys have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just like-
I was going to say, wow, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, just a comment on you all getting together, brainstorming, and then realizing, well, personally, let me back up. The initial thing that brought you here, it varies, but then once you're here. And I remember moving here from West Tennessee when I was 12 years old, and I fell in love with the place. You know, it was in TJ, and everybody was saying it was terrible, and I, it was challenging, but what I found out later was that those folks in the neighborhood, in the city, was totally embracing, and which made me want to be the best that I could be, you know, and be a part of the city, which we had just recently moved. And to do, and now, as I'm older, I told my daughters, wherever you end up, and I hope it's here in Paducah, one of them is here, the other one is a gypsy, she's traveling, she's a theater major, but that when you come back, get involved. In some type of fashion, get involved and have a say in where you live. And what you guys are doing, I applaud you, I look forward to your ideas, and we need new ideas to solve some of the challenges that we have as a community. There are your challenges, you're part of it, so we have to keep that open mind and welcome those, those new thoughts and new angles to look at something. My wife always tells me, you look at something like this forever, but just turn it a little bit, and you're like, oh, there it is. Right? So I applaud you guys. Great, great work, and I look forward to hearing from y'all.
Thank you.
Are you going to send like a little piece of paper that has some of that stuff on there?
Yeah, we need contact info. If folks out here-
Yeah.
-have ideas for you, our contact information-
I don't think it's on there.
-then we'll need it also.
Do you want it now?
I've got, I mean, I've got yours, but you should put it up here.
Okay. We can put it on the presentation, you can include it in the minutes or the notes, does that, would that work, Pam?
Pam, what would be the easiest way to do that?
We can just add it up in the highlights tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, she has it.
And then I didn't see some of you all also.
Yeah.
And then if anyone out in the public, Pam, wants to give them ideas as well or talk to them, would they look on our website or Facebook page?
Once I have the contact information-
You can do that.
-I can share it there.
Okay.
And share it in the highlights tonight. We can also get a website up very, very quickly.
I think you all should do a YouTube.
So give us, give us seven days, and you can find it online.
Jonas could probably help you, but I-
That's what I'm thinking. That's what I'm thinking. He'll build it right now on his phone, actually.
Okay. All right.
I read about it in the Paducah Sun in the morning, be my guest, right, Lauren? Put you right in the sun?
Yeah, yeah. Well, thank you.
Well, and I do especially like what you talked about, how, you know, I pull 60 names together just trying to think of who can I invite, and you found even more, so that's very good, very, I mean, I know that, you know, after we did those initial meetings, there were many more young people out there, so we want a whole crowd-
Yeah.
...to help us with this. So thank you all very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Commissioner Abraham, with the minutes, please.
I move that the readings of the minutes for May 26, 2015, and June 2, 2015, City Commission meeting be waived, and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the city clerk be approved, as written.
Second.
Has everyone looked at the minutes? Okay, city clerk?
Mr. Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mayor Kahler.
Aye. Okay, we have our motion. If Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the following documents and bids be received and filed. Certificates of liability insurance, D and D Construction of Paducah, MP Lawson Construction LLC, BH Green and Sons, Inc., Municipal Equipment, Inc., Merco, Inc., Lee &amp; Associates, contracts and agreements. Amendment number one to design agreement between the Department of the Army and the City of Paducah for design for the Ohio River shoreline. Agreement with Jim Smith Contracting LLC for Olivet Church Road Improvement Project. Agreement with Harper Construction LLC for the EPW 2015-2016 Concrete Program. Agreement with McBride Mac for the purchase of one front loader refuse truck for the Engineering Public Works Department. Agreement with McBride Mac for the purchase of one sidearm refuse truck for the Engineering Public Works Department. Grant agreement for the 2015-2016 Kentucky Pride Fund Household Hazardous Waste Grant, Kentucky Community Development Block Grant Project Completion Report for the Jackson House Elevator Rehabilitation Project. City of Paducah Police Department 2014 Annual Report. City of Paducah Finance Department Financial Report for period ending March 31, 2015. Paducah-McCracken County Riverport Authority Budget Assumptions for 2015-2016 Fiscal Year. Paducah Water Works Financial Highlights for April 2015. Bids for Paducah Fire Department Self-Contented Breathing Apparatus Equipment, Bluegrass Uniforms and Oars Safety.
Second.
Thank you. City clerk?
Mr. Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mayor Kahler.
Aye. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
All right. Okay. Upon the recommendation of the city manager, the board of commissioners of the City of Paducah, under that personal changes on the attachment list be approved.
Second. Steve.
Evening, mayor, commissioners. A very busy list, again, mostly covered up with temporary and summer positions in the Parks Department, but most notably is the first name on the list, that's the hiring of the crime analyst. Earlier this year, you approved the reclassification of a position in the police department from a former position to a crime analyst, a position we have not had in the past, had people doing crime analysis, but this is a full-time application to that. And I'm proud to say the recruitment process has ended in recommending this person for hire.
And that's not a new, new position?
It not created a new position, we reclassified a position in the department that had become vacant. So there's not an increase in the authorization. This is not a law enforcement or sworn position, it's a civilian position in the department.
Any questions for Steve? City clerk?
Mr. Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mayor Kahler.
Aye. Commissioner, who's doing Commissioner Wilson?
I'm doing.
Commissioner Rhodes, please.
You will get tired of me tonight. I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, authorizing the mayor to execute the deed consideration certificate for the purchase of brown trust property located at 9 Crebs Station Road, Paducah, Kentucky, by the City of Paducah, acting on behalf of the commissioners of the waterworks, DBA Paducah Water, be adopted.
Second. Hello?
Hello, mayor, commissioners. Paducah Water is requesting a municipal order to purchase a small tract of land that's located between Crebs Station Road and an existing elevated storage tank, formerly Hindren Tank and from the Hindren System. Now, this is a small parcel of property that we've historically had an access easement on, and we have a 10-inch water main, and we have the opportunity to purchase this small piece of property that would provide one contiguous tract.
Makes sense.
Makes sense.
All right. Any questions?
I got to listen to the full bone presentation on waterworks, and it made sense then, and it made sense to all the board members, so, yeah.
All right. That's, we go ahead and vote on that. Commissioner, city clerk?
Mr. Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mayor Kahler.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have several introductions tonight, we don't vote on these. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the board of commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a service agreement with Motorola for fiscal year 2015-2016. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a service agreement with Motorola for yearly maintenance of the 800 MHZ radio controllers, individual department radios, Paducah-McCracken County 911 dispatch consoles, telephones, and other related radio equipment in the amount of $51,994.56. This contract shall expire June 30, 2016.
Second. Hi, Brett.
Hello. Just, it's just our annual contract we have at Motorola that we use to service all of our radios and the consoles at your 911 center. So, actually, this year, uh, from last year, this went down about, uh, I think about a thousand dollars from last year. This went down probably seven thousand dollars from, uh, two thousand and seven, so, it's, that's, uh, that's basically what it is. Uh, any questions about that?
Got to maintain it.
Thank you. Thanks. Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance adopting the City of Paducah, Kentucky, annual budget for the fiscal year July first, two thousand fifteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. This ordinance is summarized as follows: Adopting the City of Paducah Annual Budget for Fiscal Year July first, two thousand fifteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government at seventy-seven million, eight hundred and ninety-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars, and summarized by fund as follows: General, thirty-two million, four hundred and sixty-nine, seven hundred and thirty dollars. Municipal Aid Program Fund, one million, six hundred thousand, two hundred dollars. Investment, five million, sixty-one thousand. CDBG, eight hundred and seventy-five thousand. E nine-one-one, one million, six hundred and ninety-two thousand, three hundred and twenty. Court awards, fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty. Debt, three million, sixteen thousand, nine thirty-five. CIP, sixteen million, five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six eighty. Bond Fund, one million, two hundred and seventy-one thousand. Solid Waste, five million, four hundred and seventy-four, nine fifty. Civic Center, a hundred and sixty, ten dollars. It's a hundred and sixty thousand and ten dollars. Rental, um, one thirty-four thou-, a hundred and thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty. Radio depreciation, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty. Fleet, five hundred and forty-four thousand, eighty dollars. Fleet Trust, two million, four hundred and eighty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Self-insurance, one million, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. Health insurance, three million, seven hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. AEPF, PFPF Trusts, one million, four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars, for a total of seven hundred, seventy-seven million, eight hundred and ninety-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Second.
Okay.
And John's going to say a few things about the budget tonight, and I, I just want, um, us to be very clear that we're, you know, we do a very transparent budget. Everything's open to the public. Uh, everything's on our website. And, um, I just would like for you to clear up some of the discrepancies there, John, with-
Sure. Uh, before I address the, um, the details of the budget, in today's Paducah Sun, there was an editorial that contained, in my opinion, a factual error. And, and this is what it did say. It said, "The city officials are projecting general fund revenue to be down by more than seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the earlier year." That's factually incorrect. It should have, um, read something like this. "General Fund Revenues Are Projected to Increase Slightly by ninety thousand dollars, while Expenditures Are Down by seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars." A slight difference in, um, yeah, slight difference in math. Having said that, um, I have chatted with the, um, one of the folks who are at Paducah Sun, and I know we're going to do some follow-up stories and different things like that, so I'm, I'm sure that, uh, they'll be helpful to us in somehow, some way. Uh, in general, the general fund, um, back to the budget. The general fund for next year contains no new taxes or fees. Revenues will remain somewhat flat, as we've discussed before, only increasing about ninety thousand dollars next year. Uh, expenditures, we expect them to be about seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars less than last year. And the main driver on that is last year, we had a number of one-time-only expenditures. So, those were one-time, and they won't have it again. And then also, in next year's budget, we are anticipating actually one less full-time, uh, person. So, now the city sensed the Great Recession, where we've dropped from four, three hundred and forty-nine full-time to three hundred and five, which is quite a drop. Um, it's something that, if you've been paying any attention on, or you all have up here, and the commi-, and the department heads have, the budget used to be a lot thicker than this.
Thicker.
Yeah, in fact, I've got an example sitting back here on the floor. It's yea-thick. This is it. And it's actually less than a hundred pages. Uh, the department heads worked to streamline this. We've got a lot of graphics in it, and we'll, we'll have more and more graphics as time goes on. This tells the story, uh, more concisely, really, but tells the exact same thing. We do it with just a lot less words, a lot less numbers. And so, there's just a brand-new format. Very soon, Pam, will have this out on the website, and so, anybody can look at that. And, uh, but overall, uh, generally speaking, operationally, the general fund has not changed much from last year, other than not having the one-time-only expenditures. And then also, a lot of times, we, we need to talk about the investment fund. And you'll recall that the investment fund was set up back in two thousand and five with a half-cent peril tax, and it's used for three or four things: economic development, community development, infrastructure slash capital improvements, and property tax relief. And just, uh, by way of giving you some explanation of some of the changes we've made, we haven't really made any. We are going to continue to support economic development with a, um, commitment of three hundred thousand dollars to GPC and Entrepaduca. We're going to continue to support the community scholarship program to the tune of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, the Arts Consortium, we will support a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And then, one of the bigger items we have ongoing every year is the contribution that you all make to the street and sidewalk funding. Now, in the current year, um, the investment fund contributed toward that to the tune of about eight hundred thousand dollars. Next year, it'll be eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Now, there's, sometimes people get a little confused on this. This is actually a contribution that the investment fund, which is an extension of the general fund, gives to the paving fund, we'll call it that, the MAP Fund, Municipal Aid Program Fund. Now, unfortunately, next year, we anticipate that the state will be giving us less in gas tax money. But the city will continue to match what they do give us, and will probably spend, correct me if I'm wrong, and we have done this for a number of years, between one point one and one point three million dollars a year for streets, curbs, gutters, drainage, all kinds of different things like that. So, that's, that's, um, in a nutshell, those summarize some of the bigger things we're doing out of the investment fund.
Thank you, Jonathan. Okay, Commissioner Rhodes?
All right. I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of Oars Safety for Sale to the city, to the City of Breathing Apparatus for use by the Paducah Fire Departments for the remaining portion of the two thousand fifteen fiscal year and six, and two thousand sixteen, with a one-year contract option to renew and authorize the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows: The City of Paducah accepts the bid of Oars Safety as the unit price of seven thousand per set for self-contained breathing apparatus for use by the fire department and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Second.
Good evening. Uh, this is pretty much, uh, we're going to replace some self-contained breathing apparatus. Currently, we have about forty self-contained breathing apparatus that are getting ages on them. Uh, because of the large replacement costs, uh, the fire department implemented a, uh, replacement program and budgeted for it. So, we've set bids out the other day. We had two bidders, Oars Safety and, uh, was the low evaluated bid at seven thousand dollars a unit. Uh, the, uh, the contract would be for this fiscal year and next fiscal year, with a third year optional, uh, if both parties mutually agree upon it. So, that's what we're recommending, that you sign the contract with, uh, Oars Safety, and like I said, it is budgeted already.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Rhodes?
Told you. Okay. I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance extending the boundary of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, by finalizing the annexation of certain property lying adjacent to the corporate limits of the City of Paducah, and defining accurately the boundary of said property to be included within the said corporate limits. This ordinance is summarized as follows: The City of Paducah hereby approves with the final annexation of certain tracts of property contiguous to the present city limits located at eighty-one and ninety-one Plantation Drive and twenty-eight fifty-five Lone Oak Road, containing five point three, nine-three-nine acres, more or less.
Second.
The next two agenda items are for the banks market, uh, the adjacent strip center, and a gas station. On May twenty-sixth, intent annex ordinance was passed by the city commission. Uh, we then went back to the planning commission, held a public hearing on June first for the zone change designation of HBD. They've made a positive recommendation to the city commission. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Okay.
Sound good?
Or rolling. Did that get us our twelve people?
I'm sorry.
Did that get us our twelve people who are back over?
None.
Was it, no, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mayor. Did you get back over twenty-five thousand? Okay, I'm just, I was asking.
It was bad.
I know.
Okay, Commissioner Abraham, please.
Is that me? Yes, it is. I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving the final report of the Paducah Planning Commission on the proposed zone change for property located eighty-one and ninety-one Plantation Drive and twenty-eight fifty-five Lone Oak Road, and amending the Paducah zoning ordinance so as to affect such rezoning. This ordinance is summarized as follows: Rezone properties located at eighty-one and ninety-one Plantation Drive and twenty-eight fifty-five Lone Oak Road from R-one to Highway Business District, HBD, and amending the Paducah zoning ordinance to affect such rezoning.
Second. Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance on the City of Paducah, Kentucky, approving a short-form agreement for the professional engineering services required to develop and manage, a request for proposals to obtain a new contractor for a solid waste transfer station and related solid waste services, and authorizing the mayor to execute said contract. This ordinance is summarized as follows: The City hereby approves the short-form agreement with HDR Engineering, Inc. for professional engineering services in the amount of fifty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars required to develop and manage a request for proposals to obtain a new contract for solid waste transfer station and related solid waste services. Further, the mayor of the city is hereby authorized to execute the agreement.
Second.
Mayor Commission, this, um, is, um, an agreement, uh, obviously, to manage, uh, the, um, solid waste, um, transfer station. I want to go back to about nineteen ninety-four, when we had a, um, landfill. And when we got away from a landfill, we had to have a transfer station where, you know, our solid waste trucks could go empty, and they'd be loading on a truck and taken to another landfill in some other, uh, community. Uh, we've enjoyed that contract for twenty years. It had a base contract of ten years, and then two renewal cycles of five years, uh, consecutively, uh, that's gotten us to this point. We can no longer, uh, pursue that contract. We have to put that out for rebid. Uh, it can get very complicated, uh, for communities sometimes. Lexington just recently, uh, did this, of which they had a dispute over, uh, the awarding of that contract. So, we want to be very careful, because these, uh, contracts are long-term and very lucrative for the winners. So, uh, that's why we have, uh, invited, uh, HDR to help us manage this as we move forward. And it does, you know, consider the recycle, curbside recycle component, uh, as we work through this.
Any questions? Thanks, Rick.
Yes. I'm not comfortable spending fifty-one thousand dollars at all. I just, I, I'm sorry, Rick, I- I just think it's a lot of money. And, and I can't imagine, I mean, it's-
Commissioner Rhodes, I echo your remarks as well. Uh, that's actually several thousand dollars less than it was initially, and about, I want to say, twenty thousand or better was in legal fees. That's part of it. Now, that's not to say, that's not to say that we're going to have, that we're going to spend that much money. That's what they're saying, they're putting aside not to exceed that amount of money. But there's a lot of legal review that takes place in these RFPs, because these contracts are so lucrative.
At fifty thousand dollars, you could, we could hire half an engineer, an engineer, and have him working for a half a year for this kind of money. I, I'm just, I'm sorry, on this one, you're going to do a lot of, because I'm just, I'm not about it.
I understand.
My, my question is this: Why weren't, I mean, why can't we do this in-house?
We do this once every twenty years. They do this five times a year. Okay? This is information that is, becomes very difficult a lot of times when you're negotiating, and this includes a negotiating component, because when you get to the end of this, and you're, and you, you're down to like, two bidders or, or, or two offers, you get into situations sometimes that these things turn into legal fights, because you don't necessarily have everything drawn out. Uh, and, like I said, I've not done this before. I'll just, I'll just come around and tell you. This is not in my wheelhouse.
I understand that.
Okay. This is something that is, is typically handled by, uh, professionals that do this day in and day out. But, like I said, the last time, the first time we did this, the first time this was done, it was in nineteen ninety-four. And I remind you that, uh, I don't, I don't know if, you know, we all remember, uh, but, uh, we had a little landfill problem, and we shared a landfill between the city and the county. And then we had to move rapidly, to move from the landfill to the transfer station that we've enjoyed for many years. Okay? These are several million-dollar contracts that these, um, solid waste handling companies go for, and, and you better have your i's dotted and t's crossed. This is why we are, we're pursuing this route.
Go ahead.
This is going to finish. Um, obviously, you, you talked about, you mentioned it a couple of times, about the, uh, legal implications, and making sure that your i's are dotted and your t's are crossed. I mean, we have legal counsel, um, that, uh, that we pay a lot of money to make sure that our documents are where they need to be, municipal law. That's, that's what they do. Um, I'm looking, and going through this document, we outline, this, the front page, the summary page, pretty much outlines, uh, what we're looking for in, uh, in the RFP. So, I, I'm, I'm thinking to myself last night, going over this a, a final time, we are, all right, this is what we want in a, uh, in, in the company that's going to come and take our trash away. And these bullets are, uh, are, are outlined on the front page. So, I, I take that, and, uh, and then I give it to you as a solid waste professional hauler, if you will.
Mm-hmm.
And then, you're going to, you, you're, you're putting a, uh, the maximum amount, or you, you laying this out here, not to exceed fifty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars. And for that, I'm going to look at the RFP, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the bids come in, we look at it, and then I will make a recommendation to the city on which person to use. Is, is that pretty much like a headhunter?
That, that's pretty much.
Okay. So, my question is-
Okay, okay.
Why can't we do that with the legal team that we have here, to spend fifty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars for someone to say, "Okay, pick this person"? I'm, I'm just asking.
I think there's more to it than that.
Well, I'm listening. This is-
There is.
We're not building, I mean, we're hauling trash, so much a ton. We're not building a city hall, or investing in a park, or a riverfront. We're just, you know, it's like, "Okay, how much? What are you going to haul my trash for? And what are you going to haul my trash for?" You know, I mean, it-
Well, Rick, I understand it's, it's, it's aggressive, it's very competitive. That's what I'm getting from you, that these, is a million-dollar business, you said. I get that. Uh, but, I, I really think with, with, with the legal team that we have, and, 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 and what's going on in your department, that we could send, I mean, we could send this RFP out ourselves. Now, you already stated that it's not your, you know, this is not your skillset.
Drawing up, drawing up RFPs that covers everything that we're looking for is, is not necessarily in our area of expertise, okay? I don't mind saying that.
That's okay.
And whether you have an HDR who have, have done this all over the country, okay? And this, this estimate for us is a lot lower than it is for other communities, but that's, that's, it's irrelevant here, okay? Having them do that professionally with our legal team involved, okay? But their legal team as well involved, to draw this up and say, "Okay, that is ready to put out on the street for, uh, the bids to be competed against." Once the bids come in, now you've got to make the comparison of, "Okay, let's sit down and make sure these, these individuals that have made the offer are going to do what they said they're going to do before we can negotiate, or before we can finalize this bid, or finalize the offer." So, there's, there's some fleshing out even at, even after the bid part.
Uh, I mean, all of that, I, I totally understand that.
Okay.
You got to vet the person that said, um, they come in, you look at them, "Okay, now let's see if they can do what they really say." And so, that, I mean, I understand that. I think most people understand that. But, again, for me, I, I don't know why we can't do that. We know what we want. We know what the specs are. We know what the law is.
Okay. Who, uh, who might you be looking forward to write that in, in-house, in, uh, within staff?
Well-
No, I'm, I'm-
No, 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 I, I totally, uh, that, that's not a problem. I'm, I'm, I'm sure that, uh, we have capable folks of putting together what we want, and then making sure that it's legal, and not getting ourselves in a bind. That's what we have legal counsel for.
So, you go to Owensboro or Bowling Green or Elizabeth Town and say, "Let's look at your agreement," you know, you get Chris on it, and you go and finds what the other agreements are, and says, "Okay, we'll use one of them." I, I just, I just can't-
Well, we, we can, we can have more discussion. I mean, uh, it's not, it's not up for vote, uh, this evening. Uh, it's being introduced. Uh, I'm sure there's-
And the city manager, we can talk with the city manager about this, too, when he gets back?
Well, I mean, this is-
Might give us more insight into why he thinks that we need to do it this way, rather than in-house.
We are, we're actually pursuing, I will, I will tell you this, we are pursuing this route, uh, upon his direction.
I mean, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, my, my question is, did you discuss, uh, discuss it with other firms other than HDR? I mean, are there other HDR- I mean, are there other HDRs out there? Did we look at other firms in price comparison with? If it has to be a firm like HDR, I mean, and here's why I'm asking that question. You talk about the legal side. And when the mayor started to ask about questions, it's not that I have a question. My question isn't, it's not a question. It's just that I'm taken back a little bit from the, the contract preparation and review is $13,700, but it's based on 20 hours of legal work? You're, you're getting, you're hearing what I'm saying.
I, I under, I understand, I understand what everybody is saying.
Right.
It's a hard pill for me to swallow as well. But we're pursuing this under our city manager's direction. And we've whittled on, on the price already, and that's why it's in front of you now.
Okay.
But, I mean, that's, that's as far as I can, I can really take this. As, as far as introduction. But when it was presented in front of me, I'm like, "Really?" But then, there's, when you start seeing these RFPs that have been developed for other communities, and then you see, you know, a 50-page document, even though your, your instructions are going out and you're, you're saying, "Okay, this is what I, I need you to do for me or do for my community." And then the document comes out and it's 50 pages of front and back, where saying, "Commissioner Rhodes, really? To, it takes all of this to explain how to pick up trash? Or, or how to transport it? Or all the ins and outs of all this?" So, I, I have a lot of the same, I guess, heartburn or, or I guess animosities or whatever the word or adjective you want to use for that. I had the same thing. So, I'm like going, "I didn't realize that these things were so lucrative," I guess you might...
Maybe I could help. I went to HDR's website, and I know it's, that they bought, they just bought her in the process of buying ice.
They're a worldwide engineering company.
Yeah, big asset nearby, I see here in town. So, at least we're going local. And I could read this, but from their website about, for that part of the work, it is the biggest bunch of gobbledygook. I mean, it's a whole page. And you'll read, and you'll say, "Well, no wonder it's going to be 50 pages because they don't say anything." They just, they're just words. Integrated plan leads to better results. A comprehensive incremental plan is essential to effectively manage your solid waste resources. Changes in demographics, aging infrastructure, materials, energy costs, and limited budget that can influence plans, a shift in focus to sustainability, blah, blah, you know, it just goes on and on. So, there's your 50 pages. They write great.
But in saying all that, I do understand we don't deal with it every day. You deal with it every day. It's no different than John dealing with the budget every day. So, we have to, I, I'm not trying to take away anything that you do every day. It's just, we just need to be spoon-fed a little bit here.
I understand, and I'm not prepared...
I get it, I get it.
...this evening.
But I didn't want you to feel like I'm trying to beat up on you.
And, and like I said, it's unfortunate that the city manager is not here this evening because the reason we're pursuing this method is because we felt like that was the best for our community with where we are here and under his direction. So, my department was tasked with finding, getting a piece, and getting a proposal in front of you, whittling on those professional fees, and then bringing the best one I could to you this evening. And I have fulfilled that requirement.
The city manager can brief all of us.
Yes, he can.
Yeah, but I, I just want to say this too.
Yeah.
Rick, you brought it, you, you presented it. And that's, and that's great. This is the first reading, so this is...
Yeah, it's first discussion and...
Right, and this is what we're doing.
And more discussion, I'm sure will be next week.
So, I mean, don't feel like...
Oh, I don't. Oh, I don't.
You're just, you're presenting it, and we're talking about it.
You're just messenger, messenger.
If the city manager was here, we'd have the same conversation.
Oh, sure, sure.
He would add some more conversation to it.
Sure.
But, again, all right, that's, that's great. I just, I, I look forward to hearing why.
Republic, they own the transfer station. That is...
They own the real estate and, and the transfer station. Yes, sir.
It's not a bazillion dollars. I just can't imagine that they're going to let this go after they've put all their money into that thing and own that facility.
Well, there's some other things too, Commissioner, you need to realize, and, and the balance of, of the commission, is that what we've done for the past 20 years, we're not necessarily going to do in the next 20 years or however long the contract. See, we're talking about, we're talking about pursuing curbside recycling. Okay? Well, that has a brand-new component out there that we've not done. And there's the drop-off component. Well, I mean, if you've gone, if you've gone out to the transfer station now, and maybe you, you want to drop some things off, well, you have to have a separation component because if you're picking up curbside recycling, you're not going to go dump them in the same building we've been dumping them in because there's solid waste going into that building at the same time there's recyclers coming into another building. So, there may be another, whole 'nother building that needs to be built. So, we have to draw these things out for the, the offers because, I mean, they might have to go out there and put two or three million dollars into the site to receive recyclables, but they need to know that ahead of time.
That was my comment, is that since Republic owns all that, that's going to give, I would think, a huge cost advantage. I mean, at the end of the day, it's extra dollars per ton to haul it. I mean, that's what drives the bottom line. I mean, it's not like, it's like...
But, well, well...
There's no intrinsic value in trash.
There, well, you just, you just, you just made a comment, Commissioner Rhodes, is that, you know, at the end of the day, it's tonnage, okay? Now, let's start, let's start applying units. Today, they're used to a certain tonnage. But now, if you start taking recyclables out of that waste stream, okay, and moving over here, and that's tonnage that's taken away from solid waste, okay? Now, there's two different dynamics. One is coming out of tonnage that's going to the landfill. The other one may be a commodity, and it may make money. Or it may cost money. It just, it just, it just all depends. So, in order for them to, now, you got to understand, these, this is not going to be a one-year or two-year. This would be a five-year and maybe a 10-year minimum contract. So, they're going to be projecting what they're going to receive for the next 10 years with, you know, some index that says, "Okay, the cost of living or the consumer price index." And then there's actually a refuse index out there. If it raises by one and a half or 2% per year, we may ask for a one and a half or 2% increase, you know, per year. So, they're making a, they're making a per-ton price based on a five- or a 10-year projection while we're actually making some adjustments here or contemplating some adjustments here on what we want to do. So, it's, it's not, it's not very easy. I mean, the city manager and myself, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not defending... I'm not defending...
I don't think it's that tough. I just don't think it's that tough.
Okay, okay.
I look forward to the, to great discussion.
I got that, I got that. All righty.
Thank you. City manager's report?
Madam Mayor, I have no report.
Okay.
Very good.
You don't want to take that responsibility on.
Explain all this.
I'm like the Land Inspector Report.
So, um...
Thanks.
I'd just like to say, say something. And then Commissioner Rhodes brought this in. And I, since he brought it in, I'd like for him to talk about that. But I had a text this week from Gail Cherry, who was the former mayor of Princeton. And she said she and her husband were in Marquette, Minnesota. And they met a gentleman that said they had modeled their downtown renovation after Paducah. She said Paducah is famous everywhere. So, I thought that was really nice and wanted to pass it along to everyone. And then Commissioner Rhodes?
Well, a, a Paducah native, John and Melissa Halsel, who you all probably know or could know, live in Nashville because of, Melissa works for TVA and John works for AG Edwards or Wells Fargo. And, and Melissa sends me stuff occasionally. And so, in the Nashville, Tennessee, there was a nice spread on Paducah, Kentucky, and it shows Charlotte Irwin's, the Flood Walls, the Quilt Museum. And it has the nice about where to go, what to do, you know, like the new restaurant, the Italian Grill on Broadway. It talks about Kirchhoff's. Talks about lots of things to, to do and eat, the Gold Rush Cafe, cafeteria or cafe for the Gold Rush. And it just, it's just one of those nice things. And when you, when you open it, it's like, "Oh, wow."
That's where I live.
Yeah, that's where I live. We have a really cool city. And it's nice that Nashville recognizes because I think we tend to think of Nashville being the coolest city, but no. So, thanks to John and Melissa Halsel. Here, I'll give you for your scrapbook.
Oh, thank you. Does anyone else have anything for tonight?
Yeah, I do. I want to, we talk about our, our community and the, the wonderful people we have here. We had the, the young professionals here talking about how they want to get involved and, and which, which was a perfect segue into what I wanted to talk about tonight and take the initiative on some legislation that would ensure that when we have art done here in the city on city property, wherever that property is, that our local artists get first refusal on that. I'm not talking about someone donating art or wanting to come and, and do a piece of art on private property. But when it's property that's owned by the city of Paducah, whether that's a flood wall, whether that's the center of Riverfront Park, whenever we get that, whenever we get that going, that our local guys get first refusal on that. And as we put that legislation together to make sure that they get that opportunity, whether that's running it a couple of weeks in, in the paper so that everybody would get an opportunity. Now, if they choose not to, that's fine. But when we celebrate our artists, and we have, I mean, from muralists to sculptures to well-documented, when we're putting together development agreements, if there is, if there is something there that we can put in to highlight our, our guys, keeping in mind that some person may say, "Well, what's, you know, why would we do that?" Well, you got to look at the community. We have world-renowned artists here. We have artists that has been featured in magazines across the globe. So, we want those guys featured whenever possible. And since we are, we oversee these, the money spent maintaining the property that the city owns, and we have award-winning artists within our community, we should always give them that opportunity to take advantage of opportunities that come for them to showcase their skill. So, I would...
Steve, I know you use, you have used the artist in several of the things that you and Melinda are working on. And don't you send out, sometimes you send out RFPs for work?
Actually, we have two projects going on right now. We received bids for the Pocket Park, and we're actually going to be coming to the commission, I believe, on June 23rd. As part of the Pocket Park, there's two different ways that we've incorporated local artists. One is the fiber art. We've had a local artist create the fabric that's actually going to be going over the park. The other is the tile work. The Paducah School of Art and Design created all the tile work that's going to be flowing into the actual back of the, of the seat. Well, actually, the third thing is the panels that now are wood that kind of separate the trashcans from the actual park area. We, instead of buying the, just the metal panels back or wood panels, we've actually had Cody with the Paducah School of Art and Design actually design the sculpture, and they're going to have that fabricated here locally. So, that park is going to have all different types of arts in it. The second thing for downtown, for some time, we've been talking about putting in bike racks. And this Sunday in the newspaper, we'll have a request for proposals for the local artists to actually design, fabricate, and install for bike racks. We don't know what they're going to look like yet, but we're going to give the artists here locally the opportunity to actually submit bids on, on bike racks for downtown for different locations.
Okay, that's, that's, that's great.
That's what you're talking about too, incorporating more of that.
Yeah, but what I'm talking about is from this body is making that, whether, city clerk, whether that will come as a municipal order or an ordinance, which one?
Well, it would be something in-house, so it could be a municipal order.
That's, that's, that's what I, that's what I thought.
I think it definitely is because I'm not an attorney, but...
Well, we have one across the street that can clear that up. So, I don't, I don't think anyone up here would have an objection to that, would they? If we had that...
Yeah, it's worded.
Well, that's exactly right. We want to make sure it's worded that includes our locals, not just a particular, what do you call it? Genre, if you will, but any. What, what Steve is doing is great. But I really think that we need to have that as a municipal order on the books.
Let me make sure I understand. So, any new pieces, any new things that are done within the city? Local artists only?
No.
No?
No, that, that they be given first refusal.
Oh, first refusal.
Are you saying within the city or that the city pays for?
Anything on, on city property.
On city property.
I mean, I have nothing to do with someone's private property. I mean, that's not, I mean, that's, I'm not, I don't have anything to do with that.
No, what I was getting at is like, um...
But can you do a first refusal on an RFP? I mean, if it's something that has, we have to have an RFP for? I don't know, I don't know how that would work.
But that, you always put it at a value too.
See, these, see, this, this is the process.
You might want to take that...
These...
Right.
Attorney.
Well, see, this is, this is part of the process, that we talk about these things, and we work out those kinks that, that, that we see may be barriers. And then we come back with a document that takes care of what we want to take care of and give our guys first refusal.
We'll make sure the city manager works on that and see what the attorneys say about it.
Yeah, well...
If it's the right wording.
Yeah, because we, we should have that. And Steve, what you're doing is great. That's exactly, that's exactly the type of, of spirit that I, that I applaud. He's doing that from his office, but what, huh?
More of it.
Yeah, and what we need to do is make sure Yeah, and what we need to do is make sure that we have some legislation to uh to cement that.
Okay.
That's it.
Here.
I was simply gonna um commend you, actually, for um getting those young adults involved and and.
That was great.
Spurring that.
Great job.
It it is, actually, and I think sometimes we overlook that and take them for granted being here, and, you know, we get negative nellys on occasion. I'm trying to say that nicely, but we hear people that talk about the decline in population, and we really do have a lot of young people here doing a lot of great things, and even though it doesn't always show and it's not the surface, there's a lot of really great things happening, and I appreciate your efforts and.
Thank you.
Um, trying to corral all that and get more of it going, but thank you.
A lot.
I mean. It reminds me when when Buick, the Buick Division GM discovered that their average age was fifty-seven years old, which doesn't sound very old to me anymore, but that's incredibly old, and and literally, they were gonna go out of business because they had just had this older and older clientele, and so Buick, and you've seen their ads now, they talk about.
Right.
That's a Buick, because they're going to a much younger, and so you're doing the same thing, except instead of Buicks, it's it's Randy.
Well, I I think um the 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 cool thing about it is, is that that group is an aggressive group.
They're infectious.
They are, they are.
They're aggressive groups.
You can feel it when they walk in the room.
Uh, they're gonna come with recommendations, they're gonna come with ideas, and uh, it's it's kinda like when you uh you encourage your your forward-thinking children to think outside the box and bring me new ideas, and they're coming, and you're like, whoa, wait a minute, hang on, wait, wait, but uh, but no, that's that's a great step. The other thing I wanna do is, Commissioner Rhodes, um, the train is looking great, man. Uh, I had several folks comment on.
Finished tomorrow.
And this is what, this is what they, you know what, I'm not lying, this is what they said, finally.
Finally.
Finally, so great job on the, taking the lead on that.
And for, and for getting all those other folks involved, too, and Sherwin Williams stepping up to the plate and giving.
You know, the.
Donating the paint.
DMV did all the decals and and West Kentucky Tech, I think they're gonna try to do something with the windows and.
See, it's, it's.
About the doors and the windows.
It it's amazing, initially, we look at it and we we had the conversation, well, I don't know what we're gonna do with it. I mean, can't move it.
This afternoon at about three o'clock, I got a ca- a call, and this fellow said, well, I understand you're paying the train, do you need some help?
Yeah.
And I said, well, I said, we're just about finished, we'll be finishing tomorrow, it's just a touch-up tomorrow, but yeah.
Yeah, people come out, wanna help, so that's, that's a good deal.
Okay, we have public comments tonight, is it Ron? Ron, come on up.
You got one, one reason I came down here was to congratulate Mr. Rhodes there on the fine job. I drove by there the night on the fine job, he did a spearheading the train renovation. And the second thing, could I ask the city manager something, I mean, the city finance director? Y'all's budget of seventy-seven million seems like, isn't that the highest per capita budget of any city in the region?
I don't know, I'd have to do the math.
I think I've done the study, I don't have the figures or anything, but I think it is, I would just.
Possible.
It's possible, that's the highest, because I know the Hopkinsville and Henderson and Owensboro don't have uh near as high per capita budget, and and Owensboro runs their city on a one percent payroll tax, where we have two. It just seems like a, we have high taxes and high cost here. And then the other thing, since uh, well, I guess he left, Mr. Murphy, uh, I I agree with Mr. Rhodes about that fifty-one thousand dollar consulting fee, because I have been in the, in the region in West Tennessee, Missouri, Southern Illinois, and West Kentucky. Probably, you're just wasting that money because there are not that many landfills around that we could even, companies could bid on this. Republic is the main in this area, they have the biggest LTR over at Mayfield, I think they handle Mayfield, I don't know about Murray. And there's no, the nearest landfill, I think, going east that's equipped to handle a city the size of Paducah is at Hopkinsville around Princeton County. Uh, Davis County has a big one, and they just acquired handling the Henderson counties and Henderson's waste. So I'm just saying, most likely, since they're already invested here, there can't be that many companies that could even bid on that project. Because, I mean, like, I think it's forty dollars a ton to carry it to Union City, O'Byrne County, and anybody else is bound to be even more than that, because I don't know if any of the landfills anybody could bid on it with. So just some thoughts I'd throw out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, meeting's adjourned.